On the docket, a little public service. Tonight's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded for RCTV live, Comcast Channel 2 or Verizon Channel 33. The videographer for tonight's meeting is Rob. Check rctv.org for more information and for replay times. All right, I'll go ahead and read the hearing notice. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectmen's meeting room at Town Hall 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts on Wednesday, November 15, 2017, at 7:00 PM on the application of Kevin Keeler of Brady Sun Rooms on behalf of Stephen De Bellis pursuant to Mass. General laws, Chapter 48, Section 10, for a variance under Reading zoning bylaw, Section 6.3, to construct a 13 by 13 and a half foot sunroom with a proposed rear yard setback of 7.2 feet and to exceed the lot coverage permitted in an aquifer protection district under Section 10, 3, 3, 1, Paragraph I on the property located at 170 Franklin Street in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there's an objection, I'll dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the appropriate boards and commissions in town, members and associate members of the zoning board of appeals, as well as the planning boards of surrounding communities. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you're going to speak on this case, even as a member of the public, please stand and raise your right hand. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, your responses I do.
I do.
Okay, floor is yours.
All right, well, first I want to apologize because I didn't realize we were the only ones on the agenda, so I, when I found that out yesterday, I felt really bad about bringing everybody out here on a cold night for one hearing. Not used to that. So, my name's Kevin Keeler, I'm the chief designer for Brady Built Sun Rooms. And when we were hired by Stephen and Lucy to build a sunroom for their son, we took a look at the, they had a mortgage certification plan, and if you can see from the picture of the backyard here that's in your packet, we had assumed that the yard was a whole lot larger than it actually is. And so, we didn't think there would be any issue with getting the permit, we knew that there was a 20-yard setback. And so, we started forward with the design process and actually started building the room. And during the building permit process, our rooms are built at our factory under controlled circumstances and then set with a crane. So, during the building permit process, the building inspector had requested a new certified plot plan. And when the new certified plot plan came back, we all were in shock of our life because the backyard is a fraction of what it is there right now. And not only that, but the house is in a non-conforming situation, which nobody in our wildest dreams thought that was the case. So, they want to build a 13 by 13 six sunroom for their son. They have a four-year-old son who has a severe form of non-verbal autism and requires constant care, two full-time teachers come in, they have some sizable pieces of equipment to come in, and there really isn't any room in the house to do it, especially at the age that he's at right now. His bedroom's only six feet by 12 feet, and the kitchen is very small, the living room is very small. And so, the idea was to create a space that seemed like it was outdoors, because he can't be left outside by himself. And all, so he would feel like he's outdoors, and also space for the equipment, for his learning, and for the teachers. And so, the other objection, objective was to put it in an area that would be quiet. And that's the reason why they chose the back of the house, because if you see from that same picture, that there's no neighbors visible at all, there's a lot of conservation land behind there, and wetlands area, or I mean, open forest area. And so, we tried to come up with a way at all of putting it on the house to achieve that, that didn't require a variance, and also, you know, basically looked at every conceivable possibility. As you can see from the other picture in your package, from the front of the house right here, the lot slopes away sharply and there's visible ledge in the front yard and in the side, right here and right here. And that's the reason why the house has been located in the far back right corner of the lot. So, putting it on the front isn't really going to work because of the ledge right here, the lot slopes away, and they also rarely have a front entryway and a walkway there, and it completely defeats the purpose of privacy because it's, the second option on the right-hand side isn't going to work, because no matter where you put it, it's going to require a variance anyway. It's still going to be visible from the road. The left-hand side right here, in order to keep it from being non-conforming, you have to push it closer to the front of the house, and the more you push it towards the front of the house, the more the lot slopes away, and also there's ledge visible in this area right here as well, which makes it a lot more difficult. So, the only logical place to put it is on, in the backside of the house right here, and where it's tucked away around the corner, it won't be visible from anybody at all in the backyard. There's a flat, level spot right there, which you can see in another picture right here, which is a great, very easy spot to locate the house. That area has been excavated in the past, there's a bulkhead there and things like that, so we know there's no ledge there in that area. And we have letters from both neighbors, which I can pass out to you, that are, they've shown the plans and explained everything, and they're 100% in favor of it. They don't have any problem with it at all, and also, in fact, state in a letter that this is a logical spot for it, because it won't be in view of the neighbors. And so, we would respectfully request a, one copy, sorry.
That's all right, we'll share.
Sorry.
No problem.
So, what we would respectfully request is a variance of 12.8 feet from the rear yard setback to allow them to build, have a sunroom installed.
Bear with me for a second, let me just get through these.
No problem.
Your application tonight is for a variance with regard to the rear yard setback, correct?
Correct.
The hearing notice seems to also advise that you've asked for a variance from the requirements of being in the aquifer protection district?
Okay, I did not ask for that variance, and the reason why is because we already had a drainage engineering plan done that will meet that requirement, and the building inspector had told me that he felt that that would be a variance that you would not grant. And so, he recommended going with a, the engineering recharge system into the, into the aquifer.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, because the-
Unless you do want to grant that, in which case-
The hearing. Your instincts were right to follow the instructions of the building inspector.
Absolutely, he's been very helpful.
And so, okay, so your request is for a variance from the rear yard setback requirements of 20 feet.
Correct.
You have, typically what we'll next do is, we're going to read the building inspector's recent memo into the, into the record, and then we would open up the hearing to board comment. Is, are you Mr. De Bellis?
I am here.
Okay, great, well, thank you for coming before us tonight. We appreciate your application and what you're trying to do. What I think I'd like to ask, however, is you have discussed a bit about what your plan is, and what you're trying to do, and why you're trying to do it, where you're trying to locate it. What I think I'd like to hear from you is, on the record, go over the statutory criteria for granting-
Absolutely.
-a variance so that the board can be aware-
No problem.
...in addition to what's in our packet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Please.
Sure. So, I stated before that there's an unusual condition on the lot, because the front yard slopes away dramatically from the front of the house, and there's visible ledge in this area and in this area, which isn't really a condition that is noticeable in any other lots in the neighborhood. And so, that's the reason why the house was located, pushed back when it was built into the back far rear corner. And the reason why it can't be located here and here is because of the slope of the lot and because of the ledge. And it can't be located on the right-hand side because it would require a variance anyway. So, this isn't going to achieve the privacy that they're looking for, this variance wouldn't.
Okay, so that seems to me to indicate that you've discussed what I would consider the first criteria, which is circumstances owing to the unique shape or topography of the land.
Absolutely.
There are, depending upon how you read the statute, three, two or three additional criteria that are raised both in your, in your application and required by statute, and I'd like to, I'd like to hear, hear from you on those as well. You know, how literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the De Bellis family?
Yeah.
And how this board might grant the relief you're seeking without a substantial detriment to the public good, or without substantially derogating from the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw regarding the 20-foot rear yard setback.
Okay, sure. So, the first, granting, not granting the variance would create substantial hardship to them based on the fact that they are trying to do this room in a private location on the house for their son, who has severe autism. And it's really the only logical place to be able to do that, and so, in my opinion, and maybe it's just my opinion, that's kind of the definition of a hardship in my, in all the years that I've been doing this. And then, the second, to address the second part of that, is that granting the variance, I don't think would detract from the spirit or intent of the zoning bylaw, because it is on the rear of the house, it's not in view of any of the neighbors whatsoever, it's not going to affect the value of any of the neighbors' property, and they're 100% in favor.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Tell us a little bit about how far along you are with the town engineer and the recharge system.
We can have that finished in about a week.
Okay, so you have an approved design?
No, we have not had approved sign, we've started the design, the building inspector said, hold off on everything until you go to the zoning board.
Makes sense, I would do the same thing.
Yeah, and so, we did, we put the brakes on it, and, but the engineer is ready to finish it and submit it, and we don't think there will be any problems with it.
All right, before we open up the, the case to public comment, I'm going to go ahead and read a memo from the building inspector into the record, yeah, you can, you make a great sign holder though. It's dated today, November 15, 2017, as regarding case 171217 Franklin Street. This proposal is to construct a one-story structure, sunroom, to a non-conforming single family to the rear of the existing single-family dwelling. The proposed 13 by 13 and a half foot structure is to be located 7.2 feet from the rear property line, the required rear yard setback in an S-20 district is 20 feet, a variance from Section 6.0 is required. Also, this property is located in an aquifer, AQ aquifer overlay district and must comply with Section 10, 3, 3, Paragraph I. And then, it goes on to quote from Paragraph I with regard to the requirements that you have to meet with regard to the exceeding 2,500 or 15% of the-
Yeah.
-lot, locate, the entire properties in the aquifer protection district, correct?
Absolutely.
And so, signed Glenn Redman, zoning officer, Town of Reading. So, that's been made part of the record. Next, what I think I'd like to do is open up the case to any comments from board members, and so, we'll start with Robert.
Well, thank you, David. Taking a look at the property, and we've done, did take a look at it, and looking at tax assessors' records, it appears that the home was built about 1953 or so. Things weren't maybe as tight back then, I don't know what the zoning requirements were when the house was built on that, so, who knows in regards to the rear setback back in 53, I really couldn't tell you. It appears to be a legal, non-conforming lot, in that the lot was laid out prior to the existing bylaws, and there's conservation land to the rear of it, no residential properties at all.
I think it's town forest, actually.
It, and, yeah, well, it swings around too, and it's actually, what, to the, be to the south and to the, the west. Conservation land swings around, and so, on two sides of the property, they have conservation land on there. Personally, I felt the arguments were valid in regards to the criteria for a variance. It did appear that, you know, there were ledge outcroppings there, severe topography in regards to the sloping of the land. I could see why they built it in 1953, you know, where they did, to get it away, so they didn't have to do a lot of earthwork and maybe blasting, et cetera, things such as that. It wouldn't appear to me, looking at it, you wouldn't see it from the street, doesn't appear you'd see it too clearly from any abutting properties at all. So, I would not suspect it would be any more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's already there, existing conditions on that. I would think they would meet the four criteria for a variance on that. One question I do have is in regards to the lot coverage. You are going, you say, to put in a groundwater recharge system. How much over the 15% maximum allowed are you over? I didn't, did I see that on the drawing?
I don't have that piece of information-
Yeah.
...available tonight, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And I don't have that off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think it was in our-
I don't recall seeing it, but I might have missed it, yeah.
Well, right here, the total is 3546.
Right.
Good 50% more.
And so, you'd be at-
Okay.
-the allowable lot coverage, where he's 3546, the allowable lot coverage, I'm taking this from Glenn's-
Okay.
-October 10th memo, I'm sorry, October 17th memo, is the allowable square footage, if you multiply the 15,468 square feet by the 15%, is 2,320 square feet. So, they're about, let's call it 1,200 square feet over-
1,200 square, okay.
...without doing the math, because if I run out of fingers and toes, I'm in big trouble. So, yeah.
So, it's a substantial amount, substantial amount.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Obviously, that's something your engineer's going to need to know, how much he's over, because that's how he will size the system for.
Yeah, he's already been involved in it, restarted it.
Sure. And that's pretty much the way I see it, David, right now.
Okay, great, thanks, Robert.
Thanks, David. I pretty much echo everything previous board member said, and I just want to add, I mean, to the extent that this board could grant relief to something I view, in my opinion, as a reasonable accommodation almost, this is an accessibility issue, that also, in my opinion, I think meets the four criteria, especially with the shape, topography, the financial hardship I see as being evident. I don't see any detriment to the public good, especially with the town forest in the back, and I don't see it, you know, degrading from the intent of the zoning, so I would support this.
Great, thanks, Nick. John?
Doing a little research on it also, I discovered that the owner of the 11 acre parcel behind it, which is listed as forest right now, apparently until the year 2024, passed on this, this particular lot, and it was sold in, apparently, what was it, 53 years old, so, 1953, and a small house was put on it. There is a small house in that forest area, which I, when I went down on the road to look at it, looks like it's a duplicate of this.
Interesting.
Except it is, instead of a, I think, a one-car garage, it's a two-car garage. But back in the 50s, I think, as you had mentioned, and I think it's probably correct, this was built on a mortgage survey plan.
Yeah.
And because it was attached to a very large piece of property, nobody was concerned that the one owner owned both properties when it was then conveyed in 53, and then moved on to the De Bellises, I think, in 71?
We've only been here since 2006.
2006, oh, I'm sorry, it was, there was an individual who was there in 71, you bought it from them. That was Kevin Scott, I think it was?
Correct.
Okay. So, I think that the intent was that it was a legal, legal lot at the time, and they just missed the side setback, which would be the westerly side of the property, with a-
Right, the garages.
Yeah. And apparently, the garage was added on later. So, my point was, it looks like it was a, intended to be a legal lot, I don't think that there's any, anything intentional that was done here. In looking at the size of the, of the, the house to begin with, I see it's a two-bedroom home-
Correct.
-and the one-bedroom that your son is in is a 6 by 12, which is smaller than a lot of closets today that are in these larger homes that were being built in Reading. So, I can understand that the utilization of the, of the property of the house for anybody, whether it's you or somebody else, is that it just doesn't fit families today, especially in the Reading area. So, by asking for a variance, whether it's you or someone else, utilization of the, of the property and of the structure, without going wild, is not without reasonability. So, in your discussion of the four criteria, I would also support that, because I think that there's justification all the way along the line.
Great, thanks, John. I think what he means too, as well, is if you're in the house in 2024, when the ownership reverts back to an individual property owner rather than the town, if you're still around in 2024 and still own the house in 2024, it might be good to put it on the back burner and maybe have a conversation with your neighbor about whether or not they need all that land back there, behind your house.
Interesting idea.
In which case, the, you know, the relief you're asking for today would then be probably not needed, not necessarily, it would be there if it's granted, but, you know, you might be able to add the land such that it doesn't encroach.
And allows you more flexibility down the line, too.
Yeah, just, you know, if you're still thinking about it in 2024, make a note of it. Si?
I think the case has been made by the other three members who have spoken, and I don't have anything to add to that.
All right, great, thank you. Eric?
Welcome to have.
All right, great, thank you. As part of the process, next part of the process would be a public comment opportunity, and as part of that, I'll read into the record the letters that you handed up. First is dated November 3rd, from Nestor Iliades at 162 Franklin Street, Reading. I'm a current resident at 162 Franklin Street, Reading. The purpose of this letter is to provide my acknowledgment and approval of the construction project and scope of work being performed or being requested at the neighborhood home 170 Franklin Street, Reading, Mass. Please let me know if there are any questions or further information is requested. Next is dated November 12, 2017. Dear people, we are writing on behalf of our neighbor, Stephen De Bellis, at 170 Franklin Street. We live at 182 Franklin Street, next to Mr. De Bellis. His proposal to add a small addition to his house is fine with us. His house is setback off Franklin Street on top of a rise and can barely be seen. The addition will be behind his house and will not be visible from our property. We have no objection with this project. Thomas and Martha Gardner, and again, they're at 182 Franklin Street. That said, is there any member here present that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public portion of the, of the hearing. File. You have submitted with your application Jack Sullivan's plot plan and what looked to be one, two, three, four construction drawings, correct?
That's it.
Accurate, okay. I think that, you know, your application is well-received and has been well-received. This board historically has been very cautious in granting a variance to any applicant, and meeting the statutory criteria is a really tough hill to climb. But as my fellow board members have said, and I will echo it, I believe that you have met them, and I can't think of a, of a better situation where this relief would be more suitable. That said, is there anything else board members would like to say in respect to this application?
David, just, just a point here, and as they pointed out, everybody, for a long time, since they purchased the property sector, was going by these mortgage surveys.
Yeah, you can't all, yeah.
And, you know, we're so grateful that now we require these certified plot plans. I couldn't imagine dealing with a mortgage survey and seeing everything is all right, and then finding out down the road that, no, that it wasn't all right. So, just wanted to make the comment that we are grateful to have a certified plot plan with all these applications, yes.
Well, issues with mortgage plot plans arise more than you would like to think they do.
Right.
Usually not this severe.
All right, that said, if there's no further board comment, I would entertain a motion. The members voting on this application will be Eric, Si, myself, John, and Robert. We need five, so Nick, as an associate, will not. So, I would then entertain a motion from a board member. Any volunteers?
I'll do it.
You will, Si? Thank you.
I would move to grant the petitioner, Kevin Keeler of Brady Sun Rooms, on behalf of Stephen De Bellis, a variance under Reading zoning bylaw, Section 6.3, to construct a 13-foot by 13.5-foot sunroom with a proposed rear yard setback of 7.2 feet on the property located at 170 Franklin Street in Reading, Massachusetts, as shown on the plot plan of land dated 6 October 2017, prepared and certified by John D. Sullivan III, P E, PO Box 2004, Woburn, Mass. And Brady built sunroom drawings enclosed with the application. I know there's several, and each one of them seems to have a different date on it, so I'm going to say enclosed with the application.
I appreciate it.
Make it simple. I don't know whether we want to add a condition on this thing that says it's subject to a- I don't know whether we want to add a condition on this thing that says it's subject to approval by the town engineer of a compliant recharge system.
Yes, we do.
I think we should, I think we should.
All right.
Conditional, you know, on that. And I think probably the three criteria we have in regards to the foundation system and the, I, I would suspect they're gonna have to get an occupancy permit, et cetera, on that.
You want me to read those off? I can do that if I find
Sure.
All right. You got them?
Also, subject to the following conditions, the petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Also, the petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector, along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. And also, the petitioner shall submit as-built plans to the building inspector showing completed, the completed construction immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Go ahead, John.
Si, would you want to possibly amend your applica, your motion
Yeah.
To grant to Stephen De Bellis, De Bellis? Because that's who we're awarding it to rather than Brady.
We can do that. Yeah, we can do that. Shall we refer to him as the petitioner?
Yeah, it should be granted to the
To the property owner.
Property owner.
Okay.
Yep.
Done.
And procedurally, as the petition does ask for, even though the applicant has claimed to, is claiming to work with the engineer, the petition does ask for a variance from the Act for Protection District, the notice does. So I think the way we've done this before is included in our decision, perhaps, a second vote, where the applicant withdraws their request for a variance under that section, and we can include it probably within the same write-up, if I'm recalling correctly, just to, to save it, to make it read right, so that procedurally, it doesn't get confusing when somebody reads the application for relief and then the decision. But I think let's, maybe let's do one vote at a time. And Si's made a motion, so before we get a second on that, to, to plain English what I've just said to you, we're gonna vote on the motion that he's just made, Si's just made, with all the conditions which include the Aquafor Protection compliance and the criteria regarding permitting and such. Vote on that. The next thing we're gonna do is, based upon your discussion and presentation, you're no longer seeking a variance with regard to compliance with the impervious cover and dimensional, well, compliance with the Aquafor Protection District.
District, yeah.
So we will then ask you if you want to request a withdrawal of that aspect of the application, and we will vote on that separately, but combine them all together once we, once we write it all up.
Okay.
That make sense to you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, make sense to us here?
Well, that's consistent with the building inspector's modification of his letter.
I think the reason why he modified it to begin with is because the application really does not ask for a variance from, from the Aquafor.
His original letter did, and that's why I believe it was advertised in that particular address.
The advertised legal notice
Yeah, no, I know that.
That I read into the record, so, which was based upon your original application, does request a variance from the lot coverage aspect of the Aquafor Protection District.
And then it was amended.
And, and it never got to us as an amendment, so the, and was never published
Gotcha.
As, as an amendment by the town.
No, I, I understand.
So, and I completely, we're gonna accomplish what you want to accomplish, but procedurally, I don't want to jam the homeowner up
Yeah, no, I understand.
In the future, should there be any question as to what relief was requested versus what relief was granted?
Gotcha.
Okay?
Yep.
Presuming it's granted.
Absolutely.
All right. So we have a motion made by Si. Do we have a second?
Second.
Robert, second. Any discussion on the motion made by Si? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the application? Five-zero-zero. Your application for a variance with regard to the rear yard setback is granted.
Thank you very much.
Based, going forward on our conversation just a minute ago, because the hearing notice has relief, request relief from the Aquafor Protection District coverage, would you like to withdraw that?
I would.
Okay. Si, since you're gonna be writing up the variance, perhaps it makes sense for you to make a quick motion to approve the withdrawal?
I would move to grant the petitioner a withdrawal of his application for a variance to the requirement for Aquafor protection.
So it would be of his request for a variance to exceed the lot coverage permitted in an Aquafor Protection District under section ten-three-three-one-I.
Right, okay.
So moved?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Robert. All right, any further discussion on the withdrawal? Hearing none, all those in favor? Five-zero-zero, that's granted as well.
Thank you.
Your variance is granted, don't go anywhere.
Okay.
I'm gonna stamp the plans and drawings that you've submitted, that you will include with the decision of this board and record it.
Yep, absolutely.
With the, with the plans that I'm gonna stamp, okay?
All set.
We have fourteen days to present the decision to the town clerk. There's a twenty-day period of appeal for any aggrieved party to appeal that decision. So you might come back in maybe a little over a month, thirty-five days or so. Keep in touch with town staff, they'll let you know when it's, when it's ready for you to pick up. All right?
Okay.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, while we try to get it right.
Everything, I appreciate it.
All right, we, we did have on the agenda tonight, review of minutes, but we're gonna table that review until Kristen has a chance to punch them up a little bit after she reviews the tape. So we'll do that maybe at the next meeting, or whenever Kristen tells us she's ready. That said, there's nothing else on the agenda, so we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Robert, second, John, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Kristen.